This place to be considered as the precinct of the Haute and Provincial Legislature according to Rule fifty-nine, subsection one and subsection two. So we are all guests of the Haute and Provincial Legislature. The second thing I want to announce is... Mala le arasa. Bakontse ba arasa. Kontse, can you please keep quiet, please? Kontse, can you please keep quiet? I want to also indicate in this meeting that we've got interpretations. You must raise your hand if you need the gadget for interpretation. The gadget will be something like this, and I'm going to indicate for English is one. Sisutu sibedi is four. Isisulu and is kosa is number five. Africans is number two. Chivenda and Shizonga is number three. Keep repeating, keep us here, Leje. English, number one. Raise your hand if you need the gadget for interpretation. I am saying English is one. Sisutu sibedi is four. Africans is five. Chivenda and Shizonga is three. And we also are having a sign language. But our sign language will be showing on our TV screen. Please raise your hand if you need a gadget for interpretation, so that they can bring you the gadget for you to be using the language of your preference. Keep your hands up continuously until they give you the gadget and you are going to connect and use your own language. Eh, kumraho le arasa. Please, can you keep quiet? Keep your hand up so that they give you a gadget, then you are able to connect to a preferred language. I repeat for the last time, English is one. Sisutu sibedi is four. Isisulu and is kosa is five. Africans is two. Chivenda, Shizonga is number three, and the sign language is showing on the TV. We are all are here because we want to know more about the public participation in terms of national health insurance. So there are, there will be presenters who are going to give you information so that you understand what is NHI all about. So let's pay attention. Mala le arasa. Hello. Wakile and Isaac, can you please go to the next door and tell them, please, to keep quiet because their noise is coming into the tent? Inside the hall, there is no noise, but outside we are getting the noise. Our agenda is as follows: opening and welcome, adoption of the agenda. In the agenda, we are going to add Department of Health in Haute that is going to also do a presentation, and there will be apologies, and there will be introductions. There will be presentation by the National Department of Health on the National Health Insurance Bill. There will be inputs by Portfolio Committee members, and there will be oral inputs and submissions, and there will be responses to inputs and submissions by both Department of Health in Haute and also the National Department of Health. I haven't seen the representative from the Department of Health. Oh, okay. Oh, they have arrived. Thank you very much, sir. As we are about to proceed with our meeting, I'm indicating, huri. Kamontse kamo. Kuna lidi testing forina. If unyoko cheka high blood or BP, ah, huri, ihodi muka pa eh, me biang. Kuna li, eh, station saw cheka high blood. If unyoka wocheka tzwikiri. Kamontse kamo, kuna li station saw cheka tzwikiri. If unyoko cheka HIV status. Kamontse kamo, kuna li station. I really, let's make use of those stations so that we know our status, so that we are able to access treatment, so that we can live longer. Kialeboga, I'm sure, lutwele. During the meeting, if you want to do written submissions, you must send those submissions to ngtdgpl.gov.za or norgast@gpl.gov.za. The closing date for written submissions will be the fourth of October. Now, can I move to the confirmation of the agenda, honorable members, as I have read the agenda? With the addition of a presentation by the Department of Health. Eh, those who are distributing the gadgets, can you not make noise? Just go to where the hand is up and supply the gadget to the person whose hand is up, please. Can I note those who want to note the agenda?
Thank you, Chair. Lina Lagaki Mappe from Mala le Litzie, a member of this portfolio. I move for the adoption of the agenda with the corrections. Thank you, all additions.
Thank you, Honorable Muhali Litzie. Any second for the agenda?
Thank you, Chairperson. Kalibizo kikreniwa, hatewe. I'm a member of this Portfolio Committee. I second the agenda and...
Thank you. The agenda is truly adopted. Now, let's move to apologies. I've got the apology for the Honorable MVC of Health and MVC Nomantun Komor Ralihuku will join us late. I've got the apology of a permanent delegate for Haute. Honorable Baha from Parliament, he is also held up somewhere. I'm also having the apology for Honorable Bloom, Honorable Mahene, and Honorable Duplessis, who would not be with us today. So those are the apologies that we have. Do we accept the apologies? They are all noted and accepted by honorable members. Introductions. Hello. Just raise your hand and let's not talk. Libicholaga, kerebekadi kame, lakichepesania, Health Portfolio Committee in Haute. Dumela, Lina Lagaki Mappe from Mala le Litzie, lena kimo, le lokola committee eh, ya health and wellness. Dumela, kimatidisomfikwe, le lokola committee eh, health.
Eh, dumela, kancela Jerimui Manna, ward sixty-seven, Morlenkote.
Eh, dumela, kimalifimosenoke from Department of Health, Haute.
Good morning, dumela, Abusheni Khuyamore. Eh, Nike Micromarwelo from the National Department of Health eh, from the section Legal Services.
Dumela, Pagati. Kalibizo kena kreni dorothiya, hatewe, kile lokola Portfolio Committee ena.
Dumela, sanbonani, njani. Ikama lama utobesi, yoraka kagula. Eh, deploye, SPCO, David Toney, Twa Twa. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Can we also, it's important for us to know who are the supporters of the committee?
Sanbonani, ikama unawa zingidingi, supporting Portfolio Committee as Senior Coordinator.
Sanbonani, ikama unobo, Service Co-Officer, eh, committee.
Eh, sanbonani, ikama lama Wakile, ngoansibande, eh, Information Officer, eh, committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Babang, they are busy out there who are supporting the committee. Leta babona, henako eh. In our midst, we also have the Deputy Chief Whip of Haute and Provincial Legislature, Meto Gomakagula. She already introduced herself. We also are having the Department of Health in Haute led by the acting HOD. Can you please provide, eh, will tell us who else is here?
Dumela, kimo tomoni bizi, I'm the District Manager, Gotwane.
Dumela, kilesivo Amalotana, I'm the acting HOD for the Department of Health.
Sanbonani, eh, Terrence Magoro. I'm responsible for operations in the Department of Health. Thank you.
Dumela, Lina Lagaki Simon Choma. I'm the acting District Manager, Ekurulinal District.
Morweni, kamalamu, zolelangwa be, Director Eli Drule. Zolelangwa be, egurulimi. Thank you.
Thank you. Eh, others, they are doubting to introduce themselves. It's okay. As long as the acting HOD is here, they are safe. Eh, we also have eh, the CEO of Mamilo Di Hospital, I can see. Why are they not getting the mic? Where is the mic?
Good morning. Dumela, sanbonani. I, my name is Dr. So, CEO of Mamilo Di Regional Hospital. Thank you.
Dr. Kusi. I'm the clinical manager, also acting CEO, Twane District Hospital. Thank you.
Sanbonani, duzu demteta, CEO, Juvi Hospital.
Thank you, Siabonga. I think we, we are done with introductions. At least you can see who is here. Let me take this opportunity to welcome you all and thank you for taking time to come and listen to eh, what is all about NHI. You are really appreciated that you took time and you came here so that you are also having a say in terms of what NHI is all about. So without any waste of time, eh, I'm going to ask Department of Health in Haute led by Mr. Musenuki to also inform this gathering what is all about NHI and what are the preparations towards the NHI in Haute. You are all welcomed and feel free. When they do their presentation, walang, write down. Mo unan, unutoka eh, taluso. Ito, gitoli fat chance for you to get explanation by the presenters, ne? So feel free. I hope you all are having somewhere you are writing. You need to understand why NHI is important eh, eh, at this time. So it's very important for all of us here to leave this place understanding what is all about NHI, so that when we go out to talk to other people, we are saying the correct thing about NHI. Let us not go and spread other messages that are unrelated to NHI. Thank you very much. Let us now, eh, get a very appropriate welcome by the first resident of ward sixty-seven here, Honorable Monama, to welcome all of us. I was just doing that information. Over to you, Councillor.
The, eh, thanks, Chair. Just a point of correction. Eh, my surname is Mui Manna. Mui Imana. Mui Imana. Sometimes they, they, they want to call me my mana. Yeah, so there's a difference. But eh, eh, good morning, everybody. Eh, dumela, sanbonani, morweni. Um, Chair, let me first acknowledge your presence eh, eh, for this eh, eh, gathering. Eh, acknowledge the presence of eh, officials, the members of Legislature, present. Um, we are joined, I can see, eh, chaired the leaders from various parties in the zone. The leaders of the ANC, they are present here. The leaders of the eh, alliance partners eh, Sangko, Kosatu eh, as well as eh, as eh, as eh, SCP. Youth League, Women's League, they are present. We acknowledge your presence. And of course, other formation eh, parties present, you are also welcome. Um, Chair, I can eh, rest you assure you are all welcome in this eh, 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 zone as Oskama Biga Zone. We are ten branches eh, of the ANC. We have given a mandate by the resident of community of eh, David Tontwa. Eh, so eh, rest assured, you are in a safe hands. So the further to that eh, we've got in the midst eh, the presence of our fundee. You are also welcome. Eh, the president, they are the host, traditional leaders, traditional healers, also present here. Eh, the media house, different media house. We just appealing to them, huri. As we have alluded, they need to report correctly what is going to transpire out of this meeting. Um, for those, bylenhori, eh, government, shena, but in particular, our communities. We want to start by thanking you to be part of this very important eh, eh, initiative by our own government. And also, we want to thank the Haute Legislature to choose this venue eh, within our vicinity as a, what David Torn, so that we input on this important aspect eh, where we know there are a lot of challenges. But of what the, the Chair have just said to say eh, we need to eh, eh, input on what is exactly is going to be presented to us, which is important. So everybody, everyone who is here and also the law enforcement, eh, we must acknowledge their presence as well. Eh, but eh, we are hoping that we are going to have a conducive and robust discussion so that we assist our government eh, to take a correct decision, which is going to help us as eh, communities. And we are hoping, lastly, eh, Chair, as I'm sitting down, that eh, we all know that the next year is elections. Eh, twenty twenty-four, um, as we have been given a mandate eh, to lead eh, this society in Davidon Twa Twa. We are hoping that eh, some of this eh, very important eh, eh, initiative of eh, of eh, of eh, of eh, of eh, government, we will be able to give a mandate to proceed with them. So thanks very much. You are all welcome.
Eh, thank you very much. Eh, everyone is all welcomed, all political parties that are here. You are all welcomed. There is no one who is excluded. Let us raise issues on this bill and thank you very much, Councillor Mui Manna. And I apologize for misspelling your surname. It's Councillor Mui Manna, the Councillor of Ward sixty-seven, here where we are. Thank you. Can I request Mr. Musenori to start with the presentation? Thank you.
Eh, dumela, Bahul. Eh, thank you, Chairperson, of the Portfolio Committee, Honorable NPLs, Councillor, my HOD, Mr. Malotana, and our COO, my colleagues, senior managers from Twane and also Ekuruleni, the other managers from the Department of Health, members of the community, kalidumera isaba, holo, ba, ba Twane, leba, ekuruleni, and all the stakeholders who are represented here. I'm going to present on behalf of Haute and Department of Health our view in terms of NHI and why we support it. Okay. Lanka, what is NHI? National Health Insurance aims to achieve universal health coverage for all South Africans. Every person will get the healthcare that he needs the time when they need it without incurring financial hardship. NHI is a health financing system that is designed to pull funds together so that we are able to deliver quality healthcare services. The process eh, NHI is simulute during twenty-eleven,噶Green Paper. Green Paper was a draft policy document that was drafted by government to be able to consult and to involve, engage stakeholders. 噶twenty fifteen, that white paper was made into a, NHI, Green Paper was turned into a white paper, which becomes an official government policy. From twenty seventeen, we began to identify issues that are critical into making or implementing NHI. And we also had pilots. Gotwane in our area and other provinces also had pilots in every particular district to be able to see how this NHI is going to work and lehui tuta lessons around the pilot sites, which we have done. 噶twenty seventeen,噶twenty eighteen, Rilerasimulaho, honale, NHI Bill, that was gazetted for us to begin to discuss and also to do public consultation. So for Haute,噶twenty nineteen, just before Covid, we had this kind of gathering. Go Westernta, go Soweto, look at Twane. Engaging people,噶this NHI Bill, to ensure that people give their inputs and also debate the issues that are around NHI. Then, water Covid. But after Covid,噶twenty twenty-three, I think it was June, National Parliament adopted the bill. It was debated at National Assembly and it was adopted. Honano, the bill is coming to NCOPE and provinces so that the provinces must make their inputs and also to debate, lelo nabatoba, ekuruleni, leba Twane. Live eh, a chance to debate and also to discuss and to make input. So that's the whole process that we have followed so far. Why do we need NHI? NHI is eh, healthcare, basically in terms of our constitution. It's a human right. Ifubala sixteen twenty-seven, it's a human right. It's very important for us to be able to deliver healthcare services for everyone. And it should be very important also to ensure that we have universal healthcare coverage as far as WHO is concerned. In our depart, eh, in our country, we have a two tire system. Renale Batubaba, Greang Healthcare Yabon, in the public facilities. Mo, Kobolarato, Umbotel, Muherani, Modi Clinic in Charona, where you get that services. But there are also people amongst us who are getting... You say, you say move, you're, you're moving. Okay. Please do. Eh, there are people amongst us who are heavy medical aid. That's why I recommend two tire system. So that medical aid, they get their services at a private hospital. It's very, very much expensive. So basically, we want to have one tire system rather than two tire systems. How will NHI work? NHI will work in terms of a creation of one national health insurance fund. That will be where the pool of funds and resources will be catered for and at a centralized area. NHI Fund will be a purchaser of services. They will pa, purchase services from all the providers of healthcare, whether hospitals, whether clinics, or general practitioners. What, where is? Okay. And then, NHI Fund will contract individuals who are providing services so that they will be contracted through accreditation so that they are able to see patients and then they are paid by the NHI Fund. The users will register. The users, Karuna, Baba, Batan, Sevis, will register with clinics and doctors and hospitals where they are going to receive services. In terms of the big picture, the purchaser will be NHI Fund, just like which will be a public entity. It will ensure that there's administrative purchasing of units. It will act like what we have now as medical aid, where we will have money to purchase services. The providers will be public facilities like clinics and hospitals and private hospitals and clinics and general practitioners will be the pr, providers who provide healthcare for all our people. When will the NHI be implemented? As soon as the bill is passed by Parliament. As soon as the bill is passed by Parliament through the National Assembly and National Council of Provinces, the implementation phase will begin. Basically, maybe in 2028. An implementation plan is being finalized in preparation for the passage of the bill. Just historically, at the moment, public service, all the government facilities that provide health, the cost of that healthcare delivery is about 265 billion that we are using as public sector to provide healthcare services to almost eighty to ninety percent of our population, who are the poor of this country. In terms of private sector, in 2021, private sector is spending about 277, almost 278 billion to provide healthcare for about fifteen to sixteen percent of the population, which is equivalent to what we do in terms of eighty percent of our population or eighty-five percent of our population. So there's a distortion in terms of that. And Baba Nalidi, medical aid, they know. September, October, medical aid has a way to pay there. You pay from the pocket. That's why we need to fix that. In terms of the bill, what does it say? The bill wants to change the way all healthcare is paid for, introduce a single national pool of health funds. That's what we call National Health Insurance Fund. It establishes that as a single purchaser of services. It will purchase services from lower down, from public health facilities like clinic, primary healthcare clinics, through what we call CAPS, Contracting Unit for Primary Healthcare. This will change the way we deliver services. Central hospitals will become components of the national government. Agralite's central hospitals, Kibo Barra, Bosholotmakake, Bojot Makar, Westivbeek. They will be part of National Health Department. They will be removed from the province because they serve not only Haute, they serve all the population of South Africa. Provinces like Limpopo, North West, they refer to these facilities because they deliver the most expensive treatment, every bit on tertiary and veterinary services. All public and private hospitals and services will be under the stewardship of our MEC. MEC for Health will be able to manage and steward both public and private services. And they will also be accredited through Office of Healthcare Standards. And they must comply with the standard that will be set. In terms of the priorities for primary healthcare, the important issue is that we will have clinics which will have catchment areas so that you will be registered around that particular clinic to receive services at those particular... We will have profiles in terms of we will know how many people are in that particular sub-district and how many providers will need to provide for that service. In terms of the way we are structured, the districts will remain the way they are at the moment. We have five districts, but they will expand and they will be called what is called District Health Management Office, which will be a national government component which can be delegated to the province, but will be much more powerful in terms of the current district office. And you remember that the President and Cocteau have introduced what we call District Development Model. So our district will be part and parcel of the District Development Model as a sector for healthcare delivery. The district office will coordinate all primary healthcare facilities, both at the private level and also at public. And then you'll be able to go in terms of the nearest facility, whether it's a private clinic or a public clinic, to get your services or to access services without paying. At a point of care, you don't need to pay. But the facility itself will claim reimbursement from the National Health Insurance Fund through CAPS. The NHI Bill once is adopted and promulgated, it will become an act. But it will not change the National Health Act, but it will modify certain provision of the National Health Act. Municipalities will not be affected in terms of non-personal health services. But as a result of this NHI Act, all the primary healthcare services and facilities that at the moment are run by the municipalities will be part and parcel of the national health insurance. In terms of readiness, all our clinics at the moment, we are making sure that they meet the standards of ideal clinics. They are being assessed by both internal and external assessors. At the moment, in terms of Haute, we have thirty-six primary healthcare facilities and community health centers that have already been assessed and certified as ideal clinics. For the next four years, they have that certificate. And then the first sixteen clinics are already certified until 2024. The second cohort of twenty are certified until 2025. They are all reaching what we call ideal clinic standards. The same time with the hospital services, we are preparing our hospital services to ensure that they qualify to be ideal hospitals in terms of standards. We are working with Office of the Healthcare Standards and our own quality assurance to ensure that we qualify to be accredited, to deliver services. Those that do not qualify, we've got quality improvement plans to ensure that they are able to qualify. There are also transitional arrangements in terms of referral pathways, in terms of patient transport, EMS, step-down facilities, so that we are ready for the services that need to be done. So there will be no one who goes straight to tertiary and veterinary services. You'll have to be referred from primary healthcare facilities or GPs towards receiving when you need veterinary or tertiary services. In terms of progress that we are making, there's an organizational structure that is still being determined for province in terms of CAP and also District Health Management Office. We also are preparing delegation framework to ensure that the offices are able to work autonomously. And we need to make sure that we collaborate with private sector. And the work that was done during Covid is important lesson for us that we can and we should work with private sector. We will also develop our financial systems and health information systems to make sure that we are able to meet the requirement of NHI. Also at the hospitals, we will ensure that we have functional business units to ensure that there's efficiencies in terms of the work that needs to be done at the hospitals. The key lessons is that we must invest more alone so that there's positive participation and engagement with the community to ensure that the process goes well. We need also to build a primary healthcare system that is functional and integrate the metros. In our provinces, we have metros that are still running primary healthcare facilities. We will need to integrate them into the provincial system so that we work together. We also need to ensure that all our clinics have digital technology, health information, so that every patient is recorded and the services that it delivers so that there's no efficiencies in terms of what we are delivering. In conclusion, NHI is for everyone. Universal health coverage can be achieved if current resources, La Hopola Gubila got 265 billion, the 277 billion. If they are used better in terms of NHI, we will be able to provide healthcare services for everyone, whether rich or poor, whether rural or urban, whether employed or unemployed. There will be a way of initiating and innovating models of service delivery. NHI will provide for everyone in terms of the cost of healthcare. It will purchase health services from both public and private providers. There will be a way of new ways of paying for services. There will be administrative and also institutional changes. But basically, NHI is here and it's going to be implemented. We will need your inputs. We will need your support to ensure that this bill is being supported in Parliament in October. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mosenuri, for that presentation. I encourage everyone to write their comments that they will bring after the next presentation. We are now requesting Mr. Micromabelo from the National Department of Health to come and do a presentation on the National Health Insurance Bill. Over to you, sir.
Okay, Chair, we're still loading the presentation? Okay, we are busy loading. I will start soon. Okay, yeah, people who understand IT assisted us. My name is Micromabelo. I'm the director responsible for legislative drafting in the National Department of Health and I'm also responsible for processing the bills through the National Assembly. I'm going to talk about the legislative process up to why we are here today. In terms of the South African legislative process, we differentiate between four types of bills in terms of the sections of the Constitution. There is section seventy-four Constitution, that is the bill that is amending the Constitution. And section seventy-five, that is ordinary bill, not affecting provinces. And we have section seventy-six is the ordinary bill affecting provinces. And section seventy-seven is the money bill. So the reason why I'm mentioning the four is to tell you why we are here today. In terms of section seventy-six of the Constitution, the bill that is introduced as section seventy-six or as text as section seventy-six is the bill that must go through two houses, the National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces. So this bill, the NHI bill, has been through the National Assembly. It was processed, deliberated, adopted by the Portfolio Committee on Health. And once the Portfolio Committee adopted the bill as a committee, they must take it to the National Assembly. That is the plenary where four hundred members of Parliament are sitting and they vote. They voted yes, majority voted yes, they passed the bill. But because it's a section seventy-six bill, it cannot then go to the President to sign into law. It must go to the National Council of Provinces. National Council of Provinces is the second House of Parliament that is comprised of members representing the nine provinces. There are ninety of them, ten from each province. And within the House, we have what we call a permanent delegate. Those are the members of the NCOP that are sent by the provinces to represent a province in the NCOP. And they are then responsible for taking the bill as referred to NCOP by the Speaker of Parliament that the bill is being passed by National Assembly, then it must now then be processed through the Second House. Then in that House, the delegate, the permanent delegates will then take the bill as passed by the National Assembly as B eleven of 2019 to the provinces where then the provincial legislatures must then conduct public hearings like we're doing today. The purpose of the public hearing in the provinces is for the province to formulate what we call the provincial mandate. And after conducting the public hearings in the province, each province will then formulate the mandate as per inputs and comments from the public hearings and then go back to NCOP to represent the vote for Haute and the mandate for Haute. The Haute will go and vote yes or no. If Haute and other provinces, if five provinces vote yes, then the bill will then be passed by the National Council of Provinces and will then be referred to the President to sign into law and then it will then be called the National Health Insurance Act. Then thereafter, it will be up to the National Department of Health and the President to coordinate what we call the commencement date of the act.
Mr. Mabelo, can we request the people outside to please keep quiet? Because you are talking among yourselves and we are going to be receiving this information and we don't want people to leave this place without understanding what is NHI. So, Mr. Mabelo, can you also please move to the NHI presentation so that maybe they are waiting for, to hear the NHI, exactly what is the National Department saying? maybe they are waiting for, to hear the NHI exactly what is the National Department saying? The other processes, they are very important, but can we directly talk to the NHI so that... Can we keep quiet, please, outside?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'm almost at the end, but then, because the bill is now passed by National Assembly, I'm going to present to you the presentation that was made to the NCOP in terms of the bill as passed by the National Assembly. How do you move this thing? Okay, so the bill establishes what we call the NHI fund as a legally defined organ of state. That is a public entity in terms of Schedule three A of the Public Finance Management Act. The bill will then establish the fund, its functions, powers and duties. The bill has around fifty-nine clauses. Each clause serves a certain purpose. For example, clause one will contain the terms that are defined in the bill. So the bill then further provides for the control of the fund by the board. So, and the composition of the board, the appointment of the board, the meetings of the board. This is the corporate governance now of the fund. Because the fund will be controlled by the board, which will be appointed by the Minister of Health. The bill further seeks to define beneficiaries of services covered by the NHI fund, including the population registration. If you check clause five of the bill, provide for the registration of users. Users must be registered for them to be beneficiaries. But that does not mean a person who is not registered cannot go to a health establishment and get assisted. Just that it will be a process because they will then have to register depending on the problem in terms of the triage. If the triage indicates that you can be registered before you'll be assisted, then that will do. But if the triage indicate right, it means you'll be assisted and be registered. So children who are born in health establishment will be registered automatically at birth. They don't have to go to register, will be registered automatically. But adult must go and register or they will be registered before they are assisted or after they are assisted in case of an emergency. The bill also provides for the contracting of accredited providers of personal healthcare services and allows for the minister to determine the criteria and the reimbursement. Mr. Musenri indicated that it is a public medical aid, medical aid for everyone. You go to hospital, you get services and then the health establishment will then be reimbursed by the fund. Provided that the health establishment itself has met the criteria in the norms and standard set by the Office of the Health Standard Compliance. Okay, this is the layout. The bill will have eleven chapters with fifty-nine clauses. What is the purpose of the bill? The bill, the main purpose of the bill is to establish and maintain National Health Insurance Fund in the republic funded through mandatory prepayment that aims to achieve sustainable and affordable universal access to quality healthcare. So universal health coverage, that is what is covered here. So the fund will be a single purchaser and a single payer of the healthcare services. Meaning after phase two in twenty twenty-nine, when NHI is fully implemented, NHI will be a single purchaser and a single payer. But medical aid will then provide for complementary services. That does not mean medical aid will not have a role. They'll provide for complementary services because the fund would now be a single payer and a single purchaser of healthcare services. So this will be done by pooling of funds and strategic purchasing of healthcare services and goods from accredited and contracted healthcare service providers. So the health establishment, hospitals, whether private or public, must be registered as healthcare service providers with the fund so that they will then be able to be reimbursed when they have serviced patients. The application of the act, this is very much important because it provides that the act applies to all health establishment with the exception of the military health services and the state security agencies. Because these two, they have their own health system. The military one, you remember, they have their own military health system. They have got their one mill, two mill, three mill hospitals. So as far as when they are on duty, then they will be covered in terms of their own system. The act does not affect the funding and function of any organ of state in respect of healthcare services until relevant legislation is being enacted or amended. So this act is going to amend various pieces of legislation amongst them is the National Health Act, the Occupational Disease in Mind and Wex Act, the CMS Act, the Traditional Health Practitioners Act. So those acts will be amended as far as the provisions relate to payment of healthcare services because the fund is the single payer and the single purchaser of healthcare services in the republic. Okay, as already indicated, that this will be a popular, this will be universal health coverage. So it means it covers everyone. It covers everyone. Even, even those that the act may not apply to their service like the military and the state security. In their individual capacity as civilians, they can still get access and be serviced by the fund. So the fund will purchase services on behalf of the South African citizens, permanent residents, refugees, inmates, those that are people who are serving in prison and specific categories of foreign nationals, also asylum seekers and illegal foreigners. But this will be, will be subject to certain conditions. For example, illegal foreigners will be covered as far as emergency medical services concerned. As remember in terms of section twenty-seven, five of the constitution, no one may be refused emergency medical care. Even section five of the National Health Act provides for the same. And visiting foreign nationals will be required to purchase their own medical insurance before they arrive in the country so that then they will be catered for. I've already dealt with registration. People will be registered. Newborns will be registered at birth. Supervising adult will register children in the childhood household and will provide for the biometrics as prescribed in the regulations to be issued by the minister after the act is being proclaimed by the president. This is continuation of the access to healthcare. Okay. This will be Schedule three A public entity, the fund. So the functions of the fund will be amongst others to purchase services and enter into procurement contract for goods. For example, the service providers must enter into agreement with the fund so that they will be reimbursed. Determine the payment raise annually in a prescribed manner. So minister, in the regulation, will then prescribe the raise that will be, that will be paid by the fund for services. So minister will determine how much each service would be. Then they will also monitor the quality and standard of the healthcare services provided. So if an establishment is no longer providing services of a standard as determined by the Office of the Health Standard or the facility itself, the facility itself in terms of the infrastructure no longer qualified, then it will not be, it will be deregistered as a service provider. Okay, I touched functions of the board. Now it will be the functions, the powers of the fund. What powers will the fund have? It will employ its own personnel. It can draw draft, accept endorsement, do promissory, that is effectively the negotiable instrument function. It will insure itself against any loss, damage or risk. It will also be able to investigate complaints when they are late by public members when they are receiving treatment at health establishment which are accredited and contracted by the fund. It will also implement the best practice in terms of purchasing of services. It will conduct research relating to the improvement of universal health coverage. It may exchange information with other organs of the state like the provincial department, the National Department of Health, the Office of the Health Standard Compliance, the regulatory bodies in the health sector like the Health Professions Council. Because it's a Schedule three entity, it will be able to institute or defend legal proceedings on its own. So it will be sued in its own names. You will not sue the minister or the department. It will be, if you sue the fund, it will be the fund in its own name. Okay, the fund will be governed by the board as indicated earlier and the board will be accountable to the minister, the Minister of Health as an executive authority responsible for the health portfolio in cabinet. So the board will consist of eleven members appointed by the minister with the approval of cabinet. So meaning it's not minister's decision only, the cabinet is going to play a role in terms of who will be on the board of the NHI fund. So the process there will be that the minister will appoint an ad hoc panel to interview candidates and also make recommendation to cabinet for cabinet to then approve the appointment. But the board is accountable to the minister, not to cabinet. So the board will exercise certain functions and powers. The main one will be to fulfill the functions of an accounting authority, an accounting authority of the fund. And remember, I indicated that it is accountable to the minister. But it will also advise the minister on matters relating to the fund. And it will define the type of reports required from the executive management. The fund is going, is going to employ people who will report to the chief executive officer. So that will be the executive management of the fund headed by the chief executive who will be appointed by the minister on recommendation of the board. So the board will determine its own procedures in terms of how it's going to hold meetings, regulate itself. So it will, it will determine that those will be transparent and must be published. And the raise, the remuneration and reimbursement of the board members will be determined by the Minister of Health and the Minister of Finance. Because the board members will be paid for each meeting that they attend and the raise will then be determined by the minister and the Minister of Finance because that includes financial matters. So the board will appoint the chief executive as head of the fund, as administrative head of the fund. So the CEO will serve for a term of five years, which will be renewable once. And he may be removed from his position on recommendation of the board, but that removal will be done by the minister after following due process. Meaning there must be procedural fairness in terms of how you remove them. So responsibilities of the chief executive officer will amongst others include accounting to the board, the board which account to the minister. He must run an efficient administration, including human resource, investigative units, complaints of corruption, complaints of fraud, corruption and also appoint staff. Because he is not going to be able to do the work. He's going to appoint the executive management. Executive management will then facilitate appointment of staff. But among the obligation is that he must meet the Minister of Health, the DG, the Office of the Standard Compliance at least four times a year. Remember, we said the fund must liaise with other state organs. These are the state organs that Parliament decided this we want to make it an obligation for you to meet at least four times a year. It means at least, so it may be more than four. If there's a need for them to have many meetings, then the CEO may then have to do that. So the board will establish the committees. It will establish many committees as they may determine. There might be education committee. For example, there might be pricing committee that will advise the board on pricing so that the board can then advise minister on those. And it may also then establish the technical board. The act provides for establishment of many committees. Amongst them is the benefit advisor committee, the healthcare benefit pricing committee. No, no, I was still on the committees, the stakeholder advisory committee. So these are, these are the advisory committees that advises the minister.
Mr. Mabelo, your slides are not moving. We're still on purpose. If you can, I'm not sure who is helping you so that the slides can move. Otherwise, we are going to be accused of hiding information. But if you can, I'm not sure who is driving the slides.
Looks like they are moving. Okay, I was on slide number fourteen of twenty-six about the advisory committees that the act empowers the minister to appoint the advisory committees to...
Hello, hello, can we keep quiet, please? It's almost finished and then we will raise issues that we need clarity. Can we give him chance to proceed, please?
Okay, I'm now on general provision with deals with the role of the minister, which is the governance and stewardship of the national health system. Because it's the national minister of health is responsible for the national health system. The national health system encompass or include private health sector. So the National Department will still play a role in terms of guidelines for norms and standards, human resource planning, development, production and management, coordination of health services, planning, development of public and private establishment, the integration of annual health plans. That will be the rules of the department, National Department of Health. So the minister will be able to delegate to provinces as management agent for the purposes of providing healthcare services and in those cases that the fund will contact with section within the province such as provincial, tertiary, regional and emergency medical services. The province will also manage their ambulance services. Now in terms of the constitution, schedule four part A and B EMS is a provincial competence. And will also assist the district management health office. The NHI is going to be implemented through DHMO. So the council will be divided into fifty-three, fifty-two, fifty-three district offices. That is the actual implementing agency for the NHI. Okay, these are the role of provinces that are continuing. I'm not going to... Okay, these are the role of provinces that are continuing. I'm not going to mention all of them. Okay, accreditation of service providers. As indicated that NHI fund is going to pay for the services rendered. So meaning somebody is going to render services and then reimburse claim the money for the treatment from the fund. So those will be the service providers. The service providers must be accredited. For them to be accredited, they must have a certificate from the Office of the Standard Compliance. Must provide the minimum range of service so that you will be regarded as service provider. You must be providing certain minimum range of healthcare services. You must also be able to adhere to treatment protocols and referral pathways. In case there is a patient that cannot attend, who cannot deal with in terms of the level of care required, you must be able to do referral to other health establishment. Also adherence to national pricing regimen. So you must charge the prices that are determined by the minister in the regulation. Minister will prescribe them. And of course, then you will have to conduct a legally binding contact with establishment or provider for a maximum of five years. So the providers will be accredited and contracted with the fund. That's why we talk about the five-year agreement. So the information platform of National Health Insurance Fund, the providers and establishment must submit information as prescribed. So minister will prescribe that this information must be submitted to the fund and will determine the manner and how it will be submitted to the fund. And the fund will use that information to plan a budget and monitor adherence to guidelines. But the personal information contained or submitted will be treated as confidential, the same as in terms of Section Seventeen of the National Health Act that deals with the patient's record. So only primary healthcare providers contracted will be paid through a contraction unit for primary care. And there will be specialists and hospitals which will be performance-based, but the EMS will be kept, kept case-based fee. So it will be, it will not be easy to determine that the EMS will be paid this, but it can be kept per kilo to say ambulance from point for five kilometers will be paid for fifteen kilometers. So that there is at least a formula in terms of pricing for EMS services. Okay, the sources. The Act must indicate clearly how the bill will be funded when it's an act. So currently, the Act is saying these are the sources of funding for the NHI. The chief, the chief source of income will be appropriation by parliament, the general tax revenue, the medical scheme tax credits, payroll tax, such as on personal income, and the financial statement of the fund will be audited by the Auditor General, South Africa. And the fund through the board must submit reports to parliament and to the minister. Those will be audited by the AG in terms of the auditing standard. So these are miscellaneous matters. It means general matters. The Act provides for the assignment of duties and delegation of powers. For example, the CEO must be able to delegate certain functions and powers to the executive management so that that will relieve him of some of the things that they can do, that they don't need him, for example. It also deals with the protection of confidential information in terms of the Personal Information Act and then offenses and penalties. And finally, then it will give it Section Forty-seven, plus Forty-seven, it gives the minister the powers to make regulation, but parliament must determine how far can the minister go in terms of making the regulations. So the empowering provision is long and indicates clearly which regulation the minister must make and those that the minister must, may make. And there is a clear transitional in Section Fifty-seven, transitional arrangement in terms of how this will be done. It will be in phase one will be twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-six and then there will be phase two, twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight. Then it is expected that after twenty-twenty-eight, the NHI will be fully implemented. We will have a universal health coverage. Mr. Mutunga had indicated earlier here about Houghton Province in terms of readiness of their hospitals. Mr. Musenure, Mr. Musenure, yeah. Mr. Musenure, you've got a new name now. So that will be a long process. It is contained in the Act here so that it is clear. But the Act also is going to amend this following acts. As indicated earlier, the Mines and Related Substances Act, the Occupational Diseases in Mines and Wex. The provision that are being amended in this particular legislation, they relate to payment of services. For example, Occupational Diseases in Mines Act, it provides that a person who claims for diseases who must pay for the examination, but then because that is a health service, it will then be covered in terms of the universal health coverage. So we are changing that part to say it will be the NHI fund that will be responsible for that. Dental technicians, allied health professions, traditional health practitioners, Act Two Thousand and Seven also. But this one is subject to further regulation being made by the minister in terms of control of the traditional health practitioners, their registration, for example, in the country. So Chair, I am happy to indicate that I have come to the end of my presentation. Thank you. Oh, they say Correctional Services Act. Okay, this is for those who are serving in prison in terms of their healthcare services so that they will be covered by the NHI. Remember, NHI is universal. Universal means everything. So we are going to pay for everyone, but there are some exceptions. Foreign nationals, asylum seekers will not receive the same level of care as South African citizens in terms of the NHI. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can we clap hands for both presentations? Thank you very much, sir, and thank you to Mr. Musenure for the earlier presentation. We apologize that our stakeholder that is seated outside. They were not able to hear a lot of what was said. So if at all possible, if there is space behind the translation there, we will accommodate them because they really were challenged because the signal was ending at the door. That's what I'm informed now. So if there is more space there at the back behind the translation, we can ask them to come in. We really apologize for a small hall and with a lot of participants. So going forward, because we will go to Sowetu next week and after next week, we will go to Twani. We will try to get a big hall like we had in City Wing last week. Now is time for clarity-seeking questions. I'm going to start on my right-hand side. I'm going to give you numbers so that you are able to know your number for the comments. I'm going to start at the back. Can you please stand up when you are raising your hand so that we are able to give you a number? Kikupaleme lengama o tu, kwekwefendi nomoro, kurele koneho komenda gab NHI bill, a baringi universal health coverage, no one will be left behind. And if the medical aid is finished now in September, you must pay from your own pocket. The government medical aid for everyone is here. Now, we're going to give each person a number so that they can know their number. Isaac, there are people standing and talking at the back. Those two gentlemen, I'm not sure if they want to speak or what is the discussion all about at the back. Are you going to speak at the back? Number one, you are number one, sir. You can sit down. Yourself? Yes, where now? You, Awule? Oh, then you can sit down if Awule. Oh, ahunastulu. Okay, you are number one, nee. Are you also talking Awulela wuti? Number two? Oh, thoka stulu? Okay, sorry, nee. But itakamo hunali stulu? Yeah, we made provision yes speaker koncle because translation only ends here, i.e. koncle. Even if we can give, this is not helpful. So kukupela rekobulelaka, African languages, babaling inside, at least by the translation. Kure speaker se koneho translateela stakeholders are in a koncle. So now refer di nomoro. Get lotoma from that row. Number one? Yes. One, you can sit down. Two? Yes. Three? Four? Five? Six? Get number six next to you, nee? Yeah, you are six. Any other hand come? Seven? Eight? Nine? Kikupela, vilitloyo ye man kama? Arinyan kiba ohhaiteka di nomoro? Itankamo, balin anili nomoro leemeng this sidei. Kurele koneho, yeah, wa namo hulukile wuti. You can stand more. Number onei, abe number onei? Number two? If unale problem ya ill-healthy, you can sit, then we will retau inviteakanako eutovulelan kayo. Get ninei akir? Eh, ki, get ninei akir kama? Eh, aritengama, getoma hape gomoraho ki kama? Kamoke ninei, no edition? Eh, gomoraho, balibulela ngemi samatsho. Number one? One, yes. Two? Yes. Three? Three, my sister, three. Yeah, where now? Three, gomoraho. Where now? Yes. Four? Eh, kamrohaha oke, number four? Four? Five and six? Lenali litugi six? Seven? Yes, kamrohao. Eight? Eighti, kamrohaha. Number eight? Number nine? Abuti nine? Number ten? Number eleven? Yes, eleven. Number twelve? Number thirteen? Eh, number fourteen? Fifteen? Fifteen? Eh, eh, kikupela re retome napekama? Akiri iya kopililu gomoraho. Kikupari starteng hape matsho. Baba honawa ye melala, emelelang, those who can't stand up, you can raise your hand, sit down. Yes? Getoma gomoraho, nee? Seven? Where naga shete white, number eleven? Number twelve? Number thirteen? Thirteen, nee? And then sixteen? Seventeen? Eighteen? Nineteen? Okay, twenty, come? Yeah, so we will finishka, reta fesaka stakeholder babaling koncle. Omunglo omunghabulelaki three minutes. Akiri already rinali twenty-nine. Enagusa nalis stakeholder koncle, libwanaba fewer chance. Number one, three minutes?
Tovela, tovela. Realeboa, rataleu, levela presentation, loe amorela. Linalakakena obetse ovela. Kijohanamulfasenla ekuruleni tembisa. Eh, kehale itomi le this NHI bill. Eh, rey amorela. Eh, reikule baivulela. En reiboni, en reikulelo, itlo ritushaviang. Eh, arinyaku isinya, rataono oboncha fe laore. This NHI gehale rey emeji. Rey amue lawani itlo ritusharleschaba, samo South Africa. Gaspiribare feolangse vorala, bamjarla Pamela, realebo.
Eh, oh, ariska tlepamatsho because akiri risathoma. Abuti kilibetsu hori kivize the honorable members motafle, libwanaba komende. So if unale wanale comment, leshop, bariba shop, kialleboha, eh, I'm sorry, hori akilimisi. Number two?
Tovela. Linalakakena, Austin Waakariaka, kijoko tembisa. Reikule presentation, but general political page. Emotoma ere, one, kote miza. It's a renali district hospital, but it cover your farms, balcony and other areas. So in terms of NHI, because of EMS in Kori Broklong, Aitamai, how will it assist those who are cast by land in a farming area? That's number one. Number two, kiaore, in terms of NHI, we wanted to know about farmers. Because pharmacy only give private companies. Now if pharmacy charger, medical aid, high bill, high pricing, immediately NHI evolve, how will it transform and assist throughout the planet? Thank you.
Aliva la tri minutes akir?
Okay.
Reubreti lastan tri minutes realebo. Eh, number three?
Okay, Galibitokitifom, training from Pumlong one twelve. Okay, kia amue la NHI, ki planishapone. So but krali question A one, mostly currently now, medical aid compulsory for most employees. And then so questiona kona, is it not compulsory medical aid, which is one of the biggest expenses in payslip for majority of the employees? Yeah. So now, is it compulsory or globally optional now? Do I take medical aid or do I simply register ka ognisha, the current plan? So if so, I So if so, um, I believe majority of us will opt out for, for, for free eh medical aid. So that is just my question akorona, is it gonna be free or the current medical aid plan? Like you said, it's, it's two tiered system, eh, really, no, no, it's medical aid and then little clinic system. So are we still gonna be compulsory to register for a private medical aid? If not compulsory, automatically we're going to be opting out for, um, for this current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, number four?
Estanbonani? Eh, kama ngomantla raswanen, we what sixty-five? Eh, mina, wamambuzengnao ilawuteni, kwamanje spiga nenenginga ku public sector eh, tuwamanje je. Ama public sector eto nenengingeznenga ku. So, mani zanale bill, itechnology nizanayo ku public eh, iso fana na nale ya ku private sector na. Ngobe la ma ngboga, ipublic sector jowa ngichte, kwamanje intataasa, iko raite, ranigale. So mani ya ku public, ipublic yoana, inentese, inletse right, itechnology right, and the foot in pinen, so baniazi male, ngayo le bill. Which means in, u government eh, tufanda, yoani public sector, shu katali, ufuna yoani benemal. Abo robert, lava milikuama sa bosdoal, milangi supporting ye onkelendole, nyabong.
Eh, sanbonani?
Number four, five, yes, yebo. Aritidi malen, can, can we keep quiet? Aritidi malen, rohono utouru hori eh, twelapi.
Okay, ekama omafi kan tlapo, nikala konala, ito twa is the what sixty-seven. I, I have two eh clarity seeking question. And then my question eh, how will be the eh, how will the eh, national health internet be funded? Given the small eh base eh, eh, base, eh, the, the small tax base the country have as a result of unemployment? Is it going to be funded the same way NFSA is being funded? And then the second question is eh, what role is the private sector is going to play eh in terms of eh provision of goods and services? Is it eh, another scheme eh, to empower the private sector to loot eh the state? Thank you.
Thank you, number six?
Eh, sanbonani? Ikama lamutob sawakashange, mbuyagoo Rational Youth Movement. Eh, first and foremost, we want to reject this, this bill. Eh, firstly, our funds will be stolen. We saw eh, eh, covid, our funds were looted, they didn't even build eh, eh, a single hospital. So we reject it with contempt. The state doesn't have resources as, as we speak. Eh, eh, NHI is going to give the private sector more powers because they are going to be giving them a state. They are going to fund eh, private sector with, with the state money. The state must build eh, eh, a capa, a capacity to make sure that they give people services. The state as we speak doesn't have pharmaceutical companies. Where are you going to give people medicines? If you want to build NHI? You are going to take the, 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 the state coffers and give to white monopoly capital. You are going to give to white people and black people, they doesn't have those companies. All those businesses are going to benefit white people and the tender printers. You are going to create eh, eh, a looting spree for, for comrades who are going to loot our, our, our national health. Eh, secondly, we are going to create a situation whereby the globalists who want to impose an agenda on our countries to, to fund our countries. For example, the, the Pilates Foundation is going to fund South Africa through corrupt eh, eh comrades. Like they are doing now with eh, eh, the, the, our electricity crises. And they are going to impose eh, eh, these vaccines, nonsensical vaccines on our people because they are funding us. So we are rejecting this bill. Thirdly, we want twenty-four hour clinics in our, in our communities. We want eh, eh, a clinic in each and every ward. We don't want this NHI bill. The state must build pharmaceutical companies, thank you.
Number seven? Lina ruila ripapa timo. Remoto wulela, we listen, now let's receive an ago because twenty-two capture everything. Eba ebulela ngam. Number seven? Eh, arinila pini ne niyako orasa yankoncle.
Okay, uh, thank you very much chair, uh, we welcome the, the two presentations which were made. Uh, my concern mostly is that eh, some of the clinics that we have within our communities. When they, they are being assessed. They are not doing justice to what, what is supposed to be done, they are moving assets around.
Can you also indicate to rukwe namase?
My name is Peshmuntu Edi, I come from Quotema. So we have a challenge in terms of assessment of clinics. I think when a clinic has been assessed, you need to go back and send somebody who will then check if what was said, it is there, it is there. Because some of these eh, eh people, they are, they are not truthful to, to the assessment committee. Secondly, uh, I want to know eh, what would be the difference between the person who's got a medical aid and eh, anyone, eh, a member of, of the community who doesn't have a medical aid in relation to the implementation of this eh, NHI? And also, we have challenges in terms of eh, the abuse of our healthcare systems by our neighboring countries. People come with their buses, taxis to our clinics, to our hospitals. And they in eh, they come here for eh, eh, labour, metas. There, now it is an emergency, so you cannot send them back. And we are not addressing that part. So how are we going to deal with that? And also, there's, within our communities, there's a, an, a serious abuse of EMS services. You find that somebody is got a headache, he's supposed to go to the clinic, they call an ambulance, they go straight to the hospital. And it's not supposed to be like that. We need to look at these things because the ambulance is going to claim for the service rendered. But the person who has eh, eh, been serviced, has abused the system. Because there's somebody who is very ill elsewhere, who needs that service eh, eh, more than the other one. And also eh, what I, I need to know is, with our hospitals, we have serious eh challenges with our hospitals. Our hospitals are aging. Like eh, your Tambo Memorial Hospital, it cannot even be renovated, it's falling apart. What is the department going to do with all these eh, 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 clinics, eh, hospitals? And we, eh, as has been alluded to, we need twenty-four hour eh clinics in each and every eh district. So that we do not see people having to travel long distances to, to, to access eh, eh, services, especially at night, as I submit chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Unale batwaba rasa angene, batlayla muti vi. Lina lili mora, libona enelea rast. Number, oh, we are done this side? Okay, thank you for the inputs, they are all well captured. Number one on my left hand side?
Eh, my name is Elgen Leguape from the South African National Civic Organisation. Chair person, thank you very much for the whole presentation, presentation done by everybody out there. My one concern, during the presentation, we spoke about the board of directors that will be responsible for the funds. Let us be honest, we know what is happening in South Africa. We've got very good programs and then along the way, they fall aside. Because of eh, money being used for purposes that are, they are not meant for. So I thought I would hear us talking about maybe a monitoring evaluation and feedback tool that goes back to the community, so that you must know what is happening about this money. It's a long program, lots and lots of monies are involved. Number two, eh, we are requesting that since there's a lot of unemployment, especially youth in South Africa. The national health insurance, it's a big program. Eh, what must the youth do, especially those that are coming out of metric and are unemployed? Maybe to be absorbed for employment in the NHI, thank you very much.
Thank you, number two?
Uh, thank you eh, lady chair. My name is Lawrence Nyaweni, I'm from Crystal Park. Um, on a point of clarity, I think eh, I didn't understand clearly when it was said, um, the, 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 the NHI will only cater for eh, the South African citizens. Now my first question is that whenever you've got a child who's working abroad on contract terms. Eh, will the NHI also eh, eh, be in a position to assist in that case? Whilst he being a South African, a bona fide child of South Africa? And secondly, um, I want to believe that eh, as the speaker earlier said, that the bill will only be active only after the minister has proclaimed it. And if so, where will this registration take place? At the health centers or any other specified area? Thank you.
Thank you, number three?
Sanbonani? Kamalam Maria Mfuking from what sixty-seven? Maria Mfuking, para, okay, okay, sbongile eh, eh, health is event in taking parliament to the people, si ayabonga le. Netintwe si kala ngayo ileni kulumulugut, abanyavant bangapane. Except abanta bangapane, guna bantu, melegula hotelu, indawin zokala, but at least batola, yonke de information because abanta basapara kakula, banta bakukominiti. Manje mabange ekola, nama kulumega lezinto, eh, 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 sounda yenge nginlela, ngoba manje ngati, abantu usibiza nasisoto. Next time, estelugutimtambi, hami oru ngokwa ma hotu, rehami nbo, nugutindele, nzo insanga yuguze. Eh, information eh, be prodi because neyazin next day space, ne nomlomo eh, pubeza nit. Manje ifabanta batola izi, eh, information yenge nginlela right, uguzoba right, neybo. So another thing, yenge nginle, ugu ibuza. Angbu, angzwaanga kukulunya ngama accident found. Makulunya ngama accident, lakmuntulimele, oru muntuke walimaswa. Batola ma accidenti, is it department of healthi, ienzani, ngalo muntuloyo. Eh, msambe uke wabanetlima, zange bamnake, lo muntuloya, antil manje. And then ike gunya ma opisa makulu, lebati makhabele, iko parade eh, albetina sisulu, eh, five floor, eh, five floor. Besegi, akinango kibiza lo muntuloyo, moketa la powasapamele, pambilo, rezengi motose state. Basomcheka lo muntuloyo, gutusapi la ora kapili na. So bestelugutnisla ndelele kakula, zoliso zinto lezo, ngoba yesi, is tumazayo, empakatin. But for further more information, inezongbizo, ngzokulu manani lapo, nyabong.
Number four?
Sanbonan? Ikamu sheni remazbuko. As the civil society program, speaking for ourselves, the civil society organisations and the communities in South Africa at large. We fully support the NHI bill and we want president to sign it as soon as yesterday. The NHI is twenty-nine years late, we cannot accommodate any more doubts, any more delays. Please prioritize comprehensive partnership framework with the civil society to reduce risk and vulnerability and to build community and system resilience through long-term strategies and invest in, an investment that strengthen community health systems. Please include sexual health and reproductive as an individual indicator. That must be part of the fiscal budget for health and planning and implementation. As part of the gender responsive planning, budget, monitoring, evaluation and auditing framework. Resource civil society led campaigns to build capacity and awareness on sexual rights, gender equality as human rights and on their impact on people's life. And on the social and economic development. Strengthen communities and gon, sorry, strengthen community engagement through collaboration between the Department of Health Institute, the national, the provincial, from the national provincial to the eh, down in the communities. To have a dedicated degrees approach to address a social determinants of health to improve referrals. Universal health coverage means that everyone who lives in South Africa has access to quality healthcare services where they need them and when they need it, without financial hardship. Eh, we are waiting for the government to sign the law as soon as isolo, nyabong.
Thank you, number five?
Sanbonan, Kamalam Kefdoramkoma from Liwa sixty-seven eh district, Sasechoji. Uh, my question is six about eh, ama presentation, ama presentation eh, swatoli ilalana. And then eh, my first question is that, guti eh, as good state you, guti this eh, machine, kwanja? The national health insurance is for everyone. And then eh, ama the medication la, esobe swatola, nalabantu la, beba, partama medical aid, equalities obisa fana na. And then u guti, eh, ama outcome, u guti, how are the process going about? Guti, is, is it a process, eh, eh, pasa or something? Is it going to be after ama registration, wabanu, which will about, also eh, ba, apply eh, la yonale eh, the public medical aid? Or si, ala before, before eh, isokala process, is isobe sas, u guti, where we standing? And then eh, eh, security nama clinic swetu, how tight will it be? As is so implemented, and u guti, medication or expensive, sozotolakala, like locally? And then eh, azangni isu eh, age range, u guti, is like, abantu aba, aba employed or aba unemployed, na bazo one eh, opportunity, u guti, webena, yofuti de, de public medical aid eh. And also eh, a question, I'm, concern, I'm, it's about ama foreigners, angana ma legal documents, wala South Africa, sis, how are we? How, how is South Afri, eh, ANC planning on negotiating with eh, ama yama countries la, eh, eh, abanta konava, wala South Africa illegally? And then eh, is so ama sources, what eh, medication le, om, om, I mean, wo medication le, abasobesi, offer, so, so, offer reishwayona? Is it from ama local pharmasi, pharmaceuticals or ama international pharmaceutical stores, so yeah?
Thank you, number six?
Eh, ankosi mchalinga pambili, masilbullele lchubosningalona. Ikama lamdu ngulalan, gacholobe eh, from eh, what thirty-three eh, gubav milevla gase zone eh, as a sancho eh, secretary of the branch. Chair, ogokana masilbulile, uguze, ma siyamkele eh, eh, pilile na, ye NHI. Just it clarity, chair. Gunado mtkimbe we port, if I'm not mistaken eh, on twenty nineteen, skesa ereza le issue eh, le uguze, u guti, eh, port eh, is ahalis katis ngakanani, ngvilu identifier, usi opel. So eh, port eh, as ifangitleritukuchiti itini, mtkimbo, is ahalis katis ngakanani, but eh, proposal of that time. Eh, te, at least ma isale eh, five years. Eh, le uguze, ne eh, porti, ingabe, ingabe sepcosini, isale five years. So, and if I itleritia is only CEO eh, koi. Secondly, chair. Sa le uguze, sa ti eh, le uguze, in terms of eh, ama neighbor countries in that time, eh, issue eh, bo itini. Eh, ingaba eh, le uguze, la mane pa countries now, is abane project eh, konana, oganya is outini, eh, le uguze, into. Tasi proposal eh, uguchutu wenzel, uguchutige, because umtumasege la apa, is difficult to tangua muiselimva. But in terms of eh, project, tongobi project eh, yama citizen, in that time, ge wagu, eh, estimate twenty plus minus fifty-four million people of South Africa. So, neyazwa ma isogui sixty, nyabona siselega kulu, singo tate. Now, just it clarity, tukulondaule, chair, uguchutingaba, mtkimbo akona, uti. Eh, lastly, ingaba eh, standard, opu tisakechilo, is standard, is awa, equally na, ne private, ne, le uguze, again, eh, public. As a result, if na, na yepoxpeki, is standard, is ase, is ase, sanwatpake, asilingani, ne tambo. Eh, le uguze, standard sa kon, uzatefigu twenty twenty-eighti, segale uguze, seslinga na na, eh, le uguze, nbandi tuku vipacheke ako, iakala ona, onu twenty twenty-eighti. Is standard, is e le uguze, kasisa beseslinga na na, ne private. Last but not least, ama private, uguchutige ama supplier, chair. Azawgwazi na, uguchutige, eh, criteria, nisa isabinzi sa. Aba eh, le uguze, ama small eh, ma small businesses. Bazawlinga na na, ne le uguze, nama big fish eh, singa chwa baba kule, sektala bewi business. Ankosi chair, diabule.
Siabong, number seven?
Eh, tumela eh, kenama tuetumulaba from what eleven? Eh, kealeboha for eh, national health insurance bill. Eh, my question is eh, hubu iloka hori already hunale di pilot project eh, dienzwe. I'm in power, so I was, what were the challenges? They but like I'm in the zone. Because we might be asking the questions, they learn. Now, I buy it as a pilot project. I go, I'm in the zone. Maybe by the lookies, I would say, I'm a recop. Just clarity on that.
In fact, the other members spoke of the proposed... In fact, in parliament, the EFF proposed a bill that speaks to the... The EFF has tabled a bill in parliament that has tabled private members' bill, that the National Health Amendment Act bill, that will see clinics open for 24-hour services seven days a week. But that bill was rejected by the ANC and the DA voting in parliament. And that was a progressive bill. However, Chairperson, my question is that, how will this bill improve the already collapsing healthcare infrastructure in the country and increase the number of healthcare professionals that are needed? How will this bill ensure that the rural areas benefit and retaining professional healthcare professionals? So as the EFF Chairperson, we reject this bill. I so submit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, number 11.
Thank you, Chairperson. Sanbonani Ikama Okayas Kossana. I am from the Board of Healthcare Funders, BHF, which is an industry association for medical schemes. As BHF, we support the concept of universal health coverage. But we do not support the bill in its current form. We have made a written submission which details the sections and the clauses of the bill that we do not support. So now I'm rising to highlight just one of those clauses. Section 33 of the bill states that "Once the NHI is fully implemented, medical schemes will not be allowed to cover what is already covered by the bill", meaning that they wouldn't really have any role to play. So as BHF, we reject that. The effect of that is the nationalization and the monopolization of healthcare funding in the country. We believe that once you've made your contribution to the NHI, you've paid your fee, your premium, whatever it is that the NHI requires you to pay. Once you've paid that, it is up to you what else you do with your money. It is not up to the government to tell you how to use your disposable income. Dictating to you what you should do with your money is unconstitutional. And the reason why healthcare or private healthcare rises or anything that is private in the country, the reason why it thrives, it's an indication of a lack of trust in government. Right now, if I tell you that you're not allowed to go to a private hospital, you must only go to a public hospitals, that's going to be a problem for you because you don't trust what is there. Even our own government representatives are carrying medical aid cards because they know they don't trust the very same system that they require the majority of the South Africans to use. And it's not limited within the healthcare space. We are the country that has more security guards than it has policemen. The reason for that, the reason for the rise in the private security industries is because people do not trust the government through the police to provide them with the safety that they require.
Can you, Mr. Kossan, we are here to talk about the bill.
Yes, I'm talking about the bill and I'm making examples of why the private sector needs to be there.
Eh eh, Mr. Kossan.
Yes, Chair.
You are talking about other things and we are here about the bill. If you want to discredit the bill, continue doing that on the bill. But if you are coming with police and soldiers and those are not part... We are only a health committee here.
Okay, apologies, Chair, noted and apologies, Chair, noted and apologies. Anyway, the point I wanted to raise is that within the healthcare space, we are supporting the bill, but we are concerned about the level and the quality of services that the government is providing. If you look at the state of our public hospitals, public clinics and all of that, it is not the kind of quality that you would want your relative to be exposed to. So we want to be given that option, that once you've made your contribution, if you still have some more money or if you are sick, you are able to go borrow money somewhere, you should be able to access the best healthcare money can buy when you need it. Not be told by government that you can only access healthcare through this one particular person that you've chosen, that particular doctor that you've chosen. So as BHF, we propose that section 33 must be scrapped in its entirety and people must be allowed to buy whatever medical services, whichever way they wish to buy them, because that is their constitutional right. Thank you.
Yeah, and you were with us last week. So we are expecting to see you next week. And also, Gadi 28, you are also going to Tuanis.
Definitely, definitely, I'll be there spreading the message.
You are welcome to come and also do your remarks. But always remember, we are a health committee. We only are talking about health. And when we are here, if you support your points by bringing other things, we are not going to allow that because those people of police or whoever, they are not here to come and respond to what you are saying. We are a health committee. We brought the bill to the people so that people can input to what they need to happen. Number 12.
Sanbonan, Sanbonan, all the protocol observed. My name is Tulima Donzela.
Oh, advocate!
We really appreciate for NHI. We were waiting for it for quite long sometimes. So we appreciate, we appreciate. At least in that, we see the access labes in the night long time ago. So, oh, always feeling so, who about who presentation here, I could love my. Yeah, no good. Who gonna, who gonna be access, who gonna have access here, NHI? I see he lava, but so about about the la ama services. Okay, so I thought I'll say this. Come here, I don't need to tell you that, but that, as of a new access. So another thing for you. You been on boost again, lowest bill, you could see. Into a, yeah, 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 and cause I would see. Sometimes my uchola, maybe he, he, he accident somewhere. Or who could la who somewhere. I'll go as a guy who less was better, just because I wanna medical aid. You wanna in a T N H I, it right because of that, because who's over the access, you're gonna know my good seat is better. So, um, who's a woman, what's he? E N H I is a part of the la. One care ama medical treatments or there'll be some specific treatments that you gonna get. Some other, they wanna refer you somewhere. That was my question.
Thank you, advocate, Madonzela Tulie. On a lighter note, number 13.
Thank you very much. My name is Lucky Chippa Lukeye, Chairperson of Devton under the civic movement. Thank you very much. We like to appreciate the opportunity to learn them, Sanje. We like to appreciate your potential to learn them, Sanje. But even for cars, I'm a clinic where guru Lenny routine. Can you please assist us if we have full 24 hours? And what is important for you is tell a goodie. Lama paper, Lama, what's in our matter file, ask great system is a digital. What about digitally, I will let you get my file in my clinic because it's a good NHI. Can you please assist us, Lapo? Your problem is in the right, thank you for more.
Eh, siabongga, number 14.
Eh, Dumelang. And like the Fraser comment from 109. Chairperson of S A C P, 109. Muyale Fabula, A N C and Sangco. Eh, officials of our department, their health. Thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts. You have done what you have been mandated to do. Thank you very much. The masses have spoken. Eh, we didn't start this thing today or last week or last month. This program has been going on. We went even door to door telling people about NHI. And our people have accepted it and I'm saying we support it. Because we've been on the ground, people knows about this and they've been expecting it for long. So we are not going back. We are fully supporting the program. And then all what other people have alluded, those with allergy on this program. I'm saying eh, we would like to advise our department to make sure when the service providers comes in, there must be a monitoring system to avoid corruption. To avoid corruption, there must be a monitoring system. Gone will be the days where we see our grandmothers, our beautiful women and children queuing in clinics, in stomach. So now this is a solution to our problem. We thank you very much. We support it fully. Thank you.
Number, number 15, thank you.
Yes, siabongga, I'm going to see you all. Who job, I'm going to come, Konza. We are it's a kind of a 23. A member, you but leave a lot of documents for him. As a member of his own, as well. Eh, I'm going to tell them I think I support that I look at that I feel. Siabongga, I could, because of my dictala, I mean, well, I feel it. Eh, so yeah, so I'm gonna put it by a color, but it is to not think I can't stand it. Corea, you got back, but it could tell us in the mall in terms of family medical aid. It was now because of my baby bone, the medical aid was seven. I'm a pillow, I'm seven, the medical aid now I pay. I'm a lack of a failure, I'm gonna say, except. You got back, but it might be there. It was about how I'm going to move to a new room, I'm gonna be on the hill. So I guess it's covered. Okay, but I like it, I just pay a monetary system, I be here, but I like it. Corea, being a thing, I could call you, I'm gonna give you, I could call my engine, I'm gonna say my clinic. Oh, but it is a my clinic committees. Eh, me, I find it like it, but it's not me. See, see, pre, well, it's in time, but see, 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 no, 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 till it. Oh, but it might be time, but it is in the end, there are some clinics, it's been in there, but it the monitoring system, you have to have a good deal, yeah, yeah, boy.
Thank you, number 16.
Eh, so I want to tell you, I'm a Pambili. Eh, I come along, we look at Shabalala. I'm sorry, I was coming back as soon. Um, as a leader. Eh, I think first of all, so for no longer, so there. You could, who can sell us out of order. In the...
Sorry, Baba, who can sell out of order.
Eh, la, 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 this is not your meeting, this is our meeting. You're out of order. This is not an EFF meeting. This, this is not an EFF meeting, this is our meeting. Eh, eh, alright, sorry, I'm not. No, 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 you were quiet, my baby, I'm called cancel it out. Eh, Chairperson.
Babu Shabalala.
Eh, Chairperson, Chairperson. You need, you need to protect us, you failed to protect the counselor.
Babu Shabalala.
I'm listening.
Can we stick to the agenda of the meeting, please?
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna be on you. Eh, this, this...
Can we stick to the NHI business?
We lead the one, the one, five, who do Chairperson? Eh, thank you, thank you, Chairperson. Eh, the, the main point, eh, leadership.
Yes, let's stick to the agenda.
We fully supported the bill. We surely, and this bill is going to work, whether you like it or not, it's going to, it's going to work. Eh, sit there, since only page, I'm part, since only page, I'm part. Eh, I'm part, I said, I wanna. I would like to contribute eh, in terms of section, section 33. That once the NHI has been fully implemented, the medical scheme may only offer a complimentary cover to services that are not covered by, by this, by this bill, that is NHI fund, that is point number one. The point number two, in terms of section 39. We say the healthcare services providers and, and health establishment that are accredited by the NHI funds must deliver a quality healthcare services and appropriate, at the appropriate level of care to users who are in need and entitled to healthcare service benefits that have been purchased by NHI fund on, on their behalf. Thank you so much.
Number 17.
Sanbonan. Eh, I could love my, I'm gonna miss Ali. I come along, I'm gonna pay to beg him, sunny. Eh, I'm gonna go, Kelly, I'm a Charlie, it's civic association, it's angry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that cool, I'm gonna say, I did the bill wrong.
Because once you you follow my those babies and the babies my baby is born all over the world. But by the start of the year because I'm glad I got paid because I think it's wrong. So I'm going to make a request. Say supporter, please, I thank you.
Thank you, number seventeen. Eighteen.
Sanbonan.
Yeah, boy.
Eh, Sabo na eh, presentation here. Eh, me na, who come on eh, Nene. Ephors or Rase what forty-six. I'm a chapessin of Sanco. Eh, umangizwa le pili eh, NHI. Yonkele mnyaga two thousand and eight. Nizwa na yo, but he say he's a isama which is so implement to a man. Ngoba, kunabantabani ngaba kauntayo. Me na ngambi sana na yo eh, NHI because umtano zalo a man ye yongo ba ngimela is covered if he is South Africa. Angiboni me na inkinga la. Why if an le scalea van tes ngabazi? Oh, no, wa nkuu siyaba kalela. Eklinena basisi ngaluto. No ba ma si sebenza, he is cover American aid. Once it's ngasasebenzi and then he problem he bakon. Wa man ye si tata ama chronic disease. Eh, ama peliso ama chronic disease without a skipping a cent. Kulu government ilo. But he si apinda futi siti mayengeza eh, NHI which was who's net as if a melani na yo. So into ngikela yoke members eh, parliamente. Nkela kutigeneslisega kulu man. He is lung man, he was ten. Niashia. Niashia. Na se parliamenta genkulu milangui sheen. Sizo wazuguzwa which ni tine parliamente. Man ye ma se ni se we is ten ga kulu. It's the nasin aseswa. Man ye ma nbu ya ni zagiti. Ti nasazu which benkulu manha. Thank you, chapessin.
Number eight nineteen. Eh, Dumelang.
Hello, can we before we lela ne, kitabuya huena. Koloiya number JD twenty-eight MT GP. Recupela eh, shift eh, ukari tibile gate. JD two-eight MT GP. Mungwa koloi, please, ya ko, 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 koloi ilin eh, shift eh, tibile space JD twenty-eight MT GP. That's a night. Is tibile gate. To a lapeli, ma'am.
Yeah, La Bocha. Eh, my nakali vizo ki Jeanette Nomason to mukoni. Ki twa ko amen zulelo eh, zone. Ko Lazaras mukome zuluwa ten kote misa. Eh, I'm happy to be here. Hori lena kibe part of this big stakeholders forum meeting here today. Because we know that the public participation meetings are very important. Eh, we've been waiting for this implementation eh, NHI. It was long overdue, Rale Bocha. And as we here at Kajaku today. I'm thinking for all of us as stakeholders. Rekrele information from these two presentations. Lady Bugatari, the Balangwen research. So the first presenter, let's hurry. Eh, in four, in any year, we need to really eh, the public meetings safe for. So which means it's our duty as stakeholders from here to take this information back to our communities. Because it's not everybody or Honang Hawa who attend. Then we give them full information, they go to the langote. Eh, Sabo Ra Rukuri, NHI. Give some of the remarks or comments. Hurry, it's private and public. What I like to car NHI is we used to have crucial accidents moditile. And when net care or ER twenty-four eight or ambulance government. They'll ask about such a hurry which one on angling medical aid. The ones with medical aid, but they're getting Mrs. Akodi private clinics or hospitals. And then when I send to government or private clinics. So with NHI, how holy Jalo but like you are go faila. They dinga glad it la wulela mora, who mola everybody at who's a really if you okotzine tata o tava eh, lift head like you na motor na angling medical aid. And go ba medical aid, they wanna but like who's a hencey, the fancy they have faila before we have fail. Kimoli wanna but la benefit on kote. And then again. Eh, has an NHI illi a universal fund. Eh, Pia Karisa, Rona ka faila, who till eh, presenter wulela hurry. Lady Foreigner, see National City wanna buy a who's aha. Hoya ka horo man who till eh, do angli di bambiriza hi. So it's very important. That's why I came Akala today, Honali Waring, they don't want to be rejected. Rona, we need this NHI bill, it's very important. It's all to a la mosola. And when coming to digital system. Go the private and public clinics, our nasa government eh, filing system, I think. We'll never know this amaya doang because we try mama moli, they took long. Hunza fail ya how. But the NHI high feet eh, implementation, I think. They'll measure the system here, Honali, the private because it's over and twice the way this a nan as partners. Hurry, Bali, haba, haba, he sits eh, but you then but he imagine. Hopeful system here, Hona, it lava improved. And lastly. Eh, ki ku ko pa ngutile, the other speaker Abu Ahori, it's a it look great damos, especially for youth. Eighteen twenty-five. So as a bona faila, some of us rebum me baba tangmosebete, you've got kids that were raised. You're on a haru bilehile di chuno. Hariska level langi, youthi faila, we've got qualifications and experience. We did the cat on a ko ha. So maybe regawa two so more NHI program. Kiala bo.
Thank you. Eh, bale ba konte, batile eh, ki baba raro, arrest atekanamba, one ya bona.
Twenty, twenty.
Oh, number twenty, sorry.
Sanwan. Ikamalamu non kolega waka trela. Ni bu ya eh, what ninety-nine, it's a can extension twenty-two. Me na ananga nagugu ti eh, ipili eh, isene. Inga giya mugu ti, if ipili yes. Well, but he na eh, twenty-two eh, is me na think. Because into abasevi sa ngayo, immobile clinic and immobile clinic is a guy once a week. And who's a guy once a week, I call her, but I'm a llama, a llama, what if I will cook it by a cooler. I'm a, I'm a, it is a bit, it's by a cooler, so it's a galan ngav. Eh, twenty-two from eh, what? So eh, what ninety-nine, we are what one-one-two, it distance eh, cool, I'm a fan of namadi. So it's a galan ngala, but I'm glad. In den kalanga, who's it's a still wa kela eh, clinic eh, extension twenty-two eh, what ninety-nine? Ipili yonas na ngagina, go to a still eh, clinic, tal.
Number twenty-one. Oh, how sana anyone? All right, thank you very much. Eh, thank you very much, eh, Rialeboha. Eh, Rena es a committee. Rea political, heridhi demo meeting eh. Because represent everybody, ne. So kupela uri, kamusohere, tileri le committee. Re, ben away, hori Rena, aritli ka hori emi, le pati eh, thing or pati eh, thing, please. It should not happen again. Reba tuba raise the issue. I mean, cancer la, urile has tata wulela, I was now eh, looking at him. Kili ka mukoshinore eh, more rea political again. So recupela twarelo, what happened? It will not happen again. So we will also talk to those that we invite here. For everybody, there are people come. Aba belonging to any political party again. Eh, re, 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 abasapota, we are for everybody. Le heri ko ha mo, he unali issue, you know, go eh, raising. Ya health, you can come to me, kitaw refera because the official eh, do you wanna come again? Eh, please, are you scaba eh, take him away? Rena re open, we lele, he le man le man. Oh, atoka, I'm go wulela le Rena. Are a para kepe ah, hurry, get a number more or come. So let's twarele, it won't happen again. We've been here, I think, I don't know how many times. Come, more hold on eh. Maybe I kill about seven, I don't know, asaka rabali, those issues again, community. So recupata twarelo, it's okay, la hurry. Mister Musenuri, Arabe, those questions that are they're directed to him for province, hurry, he ready hakakan. Otlala telaki, Mister Ma Belo, hurry. Yeah, now, we are, we are a bar ring. Because we na li raise the issues, most of you, they complain akar the system. Mara, yeah, who looki, Mister Musenuri, you are number one.
Eh, thank you very much, chapessin. Most of the issues that have been raised, we have noted them. Most of them were inputs. But Honali, the question in Yanate, the critical that we need to answer. I will ask our executive COO to come and answer them.
Thank you very much, eh, Chair, eh, and Tatum Senochi. Dumelang. Sanbonan. Eh, my name is Magoro, Terrence Magoro. Eh, firstly, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge eh, the questions, the multitude of questions that were raised by, you know, all of you. Eh, it's something that we do not take lightly. And we are quite happy eh, that many of you. You are quite averse with the challenges that we have in the Department of Health. But not only that. Eh, but to ba utwana libo Jeanette, Med Jeanette from what ten, kote misa. Utseba tabatsa hi. Kiala bo wa, so I'm going to cover just a few issues. Let me start by saying that eh, the National Health Insurance Bill. Again, but why is, as implementation plan, again. So hurawri, as it is, I honu rubuta kabu tlaano. Hurry, man, utlayraing. Or what is it that we'll do when we are appointing the board? We know that the board will last for a period of five years. Eh, but linkages with the communities, all those details are still not there. So there is going to be an implementation plan, which will be produced again. God, the colics taruna, bakon National Department of Health. And ka implementation plan eh, you. Ki onar tla honu tla losa han tle, lutseba. Hurry, eh, di lutse, di ngwe te bill is a de covera. So na te u di clo Schuma joang. Ari eko tabeng ya health infrastructure, more howting province. Eh, Riad Dumela ba. But in twaya matom. Litwante li utlu si sehuri. Haribulela ka National Health Insurance Implementation. Haribuleli fehla ka implementation, oh, the facilities taruna ta government fail. Again. Hurawri, that GP's eh, eh, office. Tokote la walu na o la wa general practitioner. Only mutseba ankwa le kote misa. Li ena utla hona, haba ta up participator in National Health Insurance, again. Dipetla ele taruna te lingona, ta private health facilities, they ready to banka fail. Ari ya ko dibulela kama ina. Litso na te u, re, re, ditlaba dibule eh ile, or ba tuba runa, baska ya kote misa faila. Bahon eh, lu ya koka eh, ko, ki, ki, spetla sesi, linga ofini tembisa. Zamuku tle, again. Again, odatwa le, arhonu ya ko zamuku tle. And kote misa ova utlezi, isn't it? So hurawri, liko zamuku tle, ritla hona, ri eh, Leon. Fela, arfela Leon amofela, but why is. Under National Health Insurance, wunali umungu ubutsi si te mona. Hurry, eh, medical aid itla Schuma joang. But habali nta ti umungu utlaluxi te han tle, Ari, mutwaha Schuma. If you are employed, oh, hona opatala medical aid. But hamu Schuma ufehla, ausa honu rang, we patela medical aid eh. So hurawri, how na li medical aid? Or how na medical aid at the moment, arhonuri eh, basi na ngmedical aid, hona joali. Ba ya ko eh, the facilities taruna ta private. But faila, under implementation ya National Health Insurance. Ka fehla runa, ritla hona, hurry. Riye, to a facility that will be able to manage us appropriately, appropriate level of care. Runa, I decide to, ri ya koka eh, but faila, system yona, itla Schuma. If luna li lihaufi, li a GP's office, there is no need, hurry. Ukitiime, we ya ko eh, spetla, oh, so, oh, clinic in elin chule eh, liwena. Itla Schuma katsila yona eh, but in twaye ngwe ya butloka. Kiya ori, National Health Insurance eh, Hari Implementa. It is not going to be a big bang approach, again. Recast no tsoh faila, kaltsa zile lingu ra, hona joali, renali NHI, he is Schuma, but faila, riya in faces. So under implementation plan eh, Department of Health, co-national, itlo irang. But la rubuta, or retoma joang. Eh, retoma kabon hunu. Eh, retoma kabatwa miwa eh, mikakani. And Hari ya re rolla out slowly. Utwana li na koe la ni re implementa COVID nineteen vaccination. Who be li puto ngwe ya butloka, ya registration, so but why is. Let's catch up, haribulela ka registration, ribulela fehla, hurry. Eh, how sa honu registara, it does not mean, hurry, okas honu krea access to health care. But faila, if you present yourself in a facility that can do the registration, ritla honu choose. Litahupula lika na koe ya COVID nineteen. Ne re honu registara ba tu eh, kodi clinic in taruna. Ne re hona, uli rumela li di link la registara, or li honu irang, u vaccinate eh, again. So ritlabere kakatsila yona eh, li ona di system taruna. Te, 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 sumang. Eh, ki te na te, to bang di, 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 amehile utwana li health population registration system. Which is currently being implemented ka eh, National Department of Health. So di lutse uka fehla, di mona utlo tusa runa. But in twaye ngwe ya butloka, kiya ori, rebulete ka ori, what are the lessons? Ta eh, pilot sites, ta National Health Insurance. Rea ziva, hurry, twan eh, ne li one of the pilot sites, more howte eh, again. Kodi province in te di ngwe, li wona, ne banali di districts eh, that are, that were, that were piloting the National Health Insurance. So all those lessons, but incorporate eh, and they are going to form part of the implementation plan, so that we are able to avoid possible pitfalls eh, when we are rolling out this system. And faila eh, are utu si sehape, lutseba, hurry, bill eh na, haribulela ka bill. We are not speaking about the implementation plan. So wunali puto eh, ngwe ya butloka. Eh, sa, eh, sa shaling, ko eh, di ko panong, tao twa na litso na te. And puto eh, it's amayala na lima bapiya, Achelet. Hurry, bari hona joali ka ori, li niya ka implementa National Health Insurance, Achelet itla twa iliko kai. Ntatemsonochi, if li hupula han tle, oribun si te this light, this PD. Ta ubun sa ori, co governmenting, hona joali. Ki Achelet eh, kanka ni, eh, re bereki san. Liko privating, ki Achelet eh, kanka ni, eh, bereki san. So Achelet eh, tsoh ka fehla, they are going to be pulled. Di be, coplicking eh, one, re hona, or re tuses chaba saruna han tle. Taba eh, ngwe ya butloka, kiya ori eh, wunali swishes in we mona, unte eh, everything in private works so well, again. As in need itaba eh, especially when it comes to the Department of Health. Hona joali, haribulela, wunali eh, medical group, akasi wulele ka li, ka li ina. Eh, which is currently being accused, hurry, di immanipulator eh, 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 di bills, si te, di patients, si te, ba, 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 di patelan. Oh, private health sector. But arfela Leon amofela, Rena li eh, health market inquiry eh, which is a report eh, ki tseba ngur, but waruna eh, ba tuan ko Board of eh, healthcare funders. But si ba kayo ona, it has got very clear and straightforward recommendations. Ta ubulela, hurry, wunali ma tata ma huluko private health sector. Wunali overseas eh, wunali taba ape ya ori eh, even the type of quality that they provide. It is not, we can, they, it cannot be said that quality ya wona, it's better than ya kote misa eh, li ya kotele mukherane, I'm just using that as an example, or honu utseba, hurry, ki in twaye rebulela kayo on. So in twaye ngwe ya ma felelo, eh, kinyaka ungulela kayo ona, kiya eh, eh, the foreign nationals, again. Eh, kitaba eh, eh, sa shaling eh, kodi meeting in taruna ka fehla. But ba wutza kayo ona, banyaka utseba, hurry eh, in twaye na itla Schuma joang. But what is important, kiya ori, under the National Health Insurance. Rebulezu, hurry, but ba tu registar. But faila, when it comes to eh, you know, payment of services, kadi foreign nationals. Eh, but ba tla ngmona, more South Africa. Eh, ba twa, balika mon tle, eh, they will have to have medical insurance. Hurry, haba kaluana eh, medical insurance ya wona, i honi, we ran, iba patelele, again. But rea ziva, hurry eh, in our country, Rena li eh, illegal immigrants. Rena li ba tuba ba ngwe ba tu tla, katsila eh, sing eh, eh, sing han tle. So ba tuba, li wona, under the National Health Insurance, even when they are not receiving full cover. But la tchanla, hurry, ba create eh, covera ya emergency medical services, again. Eh, maya, ma bapi li, li, li constitution ya runa. So eh, richantre, re utlu si sehuri eh, ki ona zila eh, National Health Insurance mona eh, itlo sumankayo ona. Eh, the medical aid schemes, di kasas Schuma, otwana li ona joali. They will be there to provide only complimentary cover, li ona eh, ditlaba di satokei, ya joalo, kaori. All the services, eh, majority of the services in the main will be made available by the eh, National Health Insurance. So roli a private sector, ki ona ya ori, private sector will still participate in the scheme kabu yon. Mara, private sector, I ikasahon, hurry, it decide, they're no, ka uru mutu u uh, hubetiko lito, huh, ritla mchaja tenrenz, again. Eh, so all those things will be regulated and it therefore means that eh, these profits eh, say illegal that they are making eh, ki ona eh, di tava, di fehla. And rea ziva, or tava eh, but ba banti, ikasba tware han tle. So, so those are some of the things that I can mention, but eh, National Health Insurance eh, na, i wulela, hurry. Eh, reskalibella fehla, the facilities ta government, the facilities ta private, they are going to be opened. Hurry, re hona, o difitel la litso ona, again, kiala bo.
Also to respond.
Okay, eh, thank you. Eh, I think that the Magoro answered almost all the questions that were answered and I don't want to repeat eh, eh, most of his answers. But I think I can only indicate that those eh, inputs that come as a form of complaints and challenges are noted. Especially that the provinces here and the HODs here, they have noted them, they will attend to them. Those that related to the bill, eh, Mister Magoro answered them very well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, eh, Mister Marelo. Li hupula nguri. Kajeti eh. Inali treka. Ibereka. Ibereka ka mo fehla. Ibereka mo fehla because he linked li eh, the computer seti le ngamo, ne. Please ask a trekta mapodi sahosa tokahali, ne. Eh, Ibereka ka mo, meeting eh, oh, like, oh, tla, pato ekonekta li meeting, whoa. Mara, heu kata ma kayo ona, mapodi saheta. Ibereka ka mo, Ari sheen, kamoris kata male ona. Sabo be eh di, heu na li eh, di questions eh. Please, write them and bring them to, send them to any kid eh, GPL dot gov dot z a. Tedi ngwe di rumela ho. N O cast eh, GPL dot gov dot z a, please eh, eh, ma pele, asirifet, liska tiela ba tu, because more. Arsa, resabulela eh, ma pele, please, 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 please. Please, liska harasa community eh, re na eh, ma pele, resabulela mo. Liska ya hamo, retofet, ritla, ritla, li wutza, or li di la te. Please, please, kamu so here, ba visa ba kasi itle, he li ba harasa, eh, ne. Ki ba harasa keli na, ba harasi ki committee, ne. Please, I'll compen chabasari namu. Yeah, so eh, kina noru, Mister Mahoro, uarabi le di questions ka fehla, lutwi lohur di ngaka. Me private doctors, li wona, baba ka join na NHI. Utoya next door, ulio wona doctor, because NHI eh, doctor eh, join ilin, keep heart, so ah, una urutla, tuwa mo, du la ngwe eh, hula, again. I know many clinic, ki eh, ngwe ya di private hospital, Baba supporta NHI and many other private hospital. Li hupula nguri government, in patela eh, ba tuba di medical aid, hurababeli di medical aid. Because government eh, contributor portion. Mara, osna medical aid eh, upgrade that portion is important, hurry. Re, re, ben away, hurry, ki sixteen percent eh, grant that portion ya medical aid, again. What about mutwas na medical aid, I agree. Ki rawri, liben away, u butloka, hurry. Heu, u, 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 wulela, una ha ne, hurry, na ki benefited because I kina medical aid. Li na bo le ri, li niya ka hube li monitoring eh, evaluation. Again, ki seli swulela mbo. So that uru kuska bali ma tata, re na koe eh, eh, ene li re li na, asimusha tembo. Bot member, adule five years. Atama, eh, u tle baba, ki seli swulela, na, ki ri ki seli swulela. Eh, Rena re, gringwadi le, hurry, community mo eh, re, ha, niya ki ba tu ba mshat. Mara, bot member, eh, ki four yes, ki four times eh, yeah. So heba ka jamba eh, tembar, ba tla wa next week, eh, hona ali, ne. Again, omungu rile, ba jamba eh, tem, hurba we happy, hurba hole, ah, wa. Four times eh, yeah, ba du la quota, quota, quota like that, ah, una, hurababeli meeting, whoa, five. Unless wunali emergency, hulu, hulu, like, kana kwa eh, eh, COVID, again. Because it has eh, ti ki, 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 twehulu, so li niya kali di facility, hurdi be up to date eh, so that di be ready, hurdi tuseba atwa, again. So, na again, li na, le sapota NHI, Mara. Li niya ka hulu ki si wehmo, le mo, le mo, la, again. Again, akeli Mr. Presentee. Le re la eh, sapota, Mara fixa, mo, le, mo, le, mo, le, mo, la. So, kiya le leboha, hurry. Le re, government, li ki sa want to three, hurry, NHI eh, itla mo, ekre eh, lu, hurry, Rena re sharp. Sabo fehlo, li na, ka fehla, li du la mo fat, di jodi etla, mo li du ti, again. Liska eh, me lela, di jodi etla, ne. Liska eh, me lela, di jodi etla, ba to lefa di jo, sitet, le ba kote ente. Liska eh, me lela, li du le fasid, di jodi etla. My sister eh, na uwe, abulela ka di loza, Rafu, again, Rena, asir na ba department eh, transport. Ki moni eh, ma eh, ma mo, ka atoka information, eh, kana atla mo, ritla mo refera, o ba tuba Rafu, because kiya wona wa eh, ma eh, ma, le komra. Rena aribe re, ki si loka di loza Rafu, because Ari, Ari, ba, biliya Rafu, or ya ba tuba Rafu, eh, tili le, cha, chile, le ngwe itla tusa, Mara, for now. My sister, kana atla mo, ritla mu konekta le, ba tuba ba ka mutusa. Ki ratau le leboha, hurili tille, li raise eh, di commenti, zalina, ready capture eh, le, retodi submita. So, kamu so my sister, how na li votata, re behave eh, katsila eh, because imagine, eh, heba tuba butleba. Baka behave, va katsila eh, oh, kutu taka takaan. So Rale leboha, le driving safe eh, re li ya hai, na bo li, liska eh, me lela. Ya ba kana ba koleka, me chini ya bo, na ribi za me chini ka spade. Kiala bo, meeting eh, fehdi.